America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Rule.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois. Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Older woman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner. Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Correspondence.
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, we have RBT 2024 audit report.
Hello, everybody. I'm just going to go through some financial highlights based on the audit. First, I'd like to thank Leonora and Rosa and their team for getting the audit done. There were no significant issues, and the city adopted GAZB 101 for compensated absences as required, so there's no issues with any new pronouncements. There were no significant or unusual transactions or policies, and we had no disagreements. So on the financial statement itself, because there's two pieces, there were no internal control weaknesses for 2024 or 2023. In 2023, there was a noncompliance related to training or sexual harassment training, but there were none during 2024, so that has been corrected. We did have a few restatements based on cleaning up some items for fixed assets, and that resulted in a decrease of $2 million to the beginning governmental fund balance. There were 17 journal entries proposed and accepted by the treasurer. Additionally, they gave us 13 entries as we started the audit. Oh, I guess I would need to do this. I apologize. So the single audit has an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, as does the regular financial statement. Again, there were no internal control weaknesses on the single audit, and there was the noncompliance for 2023, but again, nothing for 2024. So overall, 2024 is completely clean in both the regular financial statement and the single audit. So for cash, the city had a little over $37 million, and the governmental funds had a little over $36 million, of which $9 million was invested in I-class, which does get the city better interest rates than some of the local banks may. And here is a breakdown of how that cash goes. So you'll see general fund and capital projects have a majority of the cash, which is where you want that to be, because it funds your projects that you do, and we'll talk about that in a few more slides. So that's your $36 million. Everything is in the positive, you know, and all your funds have cash, which is what you want. If you look at a trend for your bonds for the last few years, you can see that since 2021, it's been decreasing, and that may change from year to year based on what projects the city is going to do and what they need funding for. And this is all long-term debt. And then we move to the bands payable, which is your short-term debt, which is usually a year or less and either renews or will convert to the long-term debt. And you'll see there's a little bit of a fluctuation, but that's just based on the needs of immediate financing. And then there is the performance contract, which was the energy-saving equipment that was purchased years ago, and that will mature in 2031, so a little, few more years, and that'll be gone. But you have $6.6 million left on that. And your Section 8 loans will be paid off in 2027, and there was only $36,000 at the end of 2024 for that. And this shows, and it looks a little blurry, the fund balance summary. So this is what kind of equity each of the funds has, and all are positive other than your capital, but that's just going to be a timing issue based on keeping projects going, and you'll see your list of projects coming up, and based on when you get timing of financing or grants come through. But that means the city isn't stopping those projects to wait for funding because they have other funds that can carry it. So here is the first page of all of the projects that the city has going, and you can see there is significant projects going on, which is always great to see. And then here's the ending. So last year, there was $41.6 million as your ending, which was in progress. They added $24 million, and they put $13.3 million into service during 2024. So your total project costs are $52 million as of the end of 2024. So it just shows all of the things that the city is doing to make the community better. Here is your listing of fixed assets. So this includes both the construction and assets that have been acquired over the years. And there is $185 million of capital assets currently on the books and records of the city. And just to give you a little bit of perspective, the county has $554 million, so you're about 34% in comparison to them. So it shows how much just one municipality is doing in comparison to the whole county. So I commend that. This is your federal and state single audit, which you're required to have a separate audit on any funds that come in from special sources, especially federal. So there was $14 million spent of funds that came in from federal sources. It's not the money that came in during 2024, but it's the money that went out, because they want to know what you're spending that on. And these are the different projects that the city spent. I think that's it. I don't want to go through that kind of fast. I know you guys have other things to do. Any particular questions?
Alderman Johnson.
Going back to your openings, so we have something that wasn't done correctly, and do we correct it?
In 2023.
The nonconforming.
What's the consequence of that?
Nothing.
Nothing.
There really isn't. It's just a finding that we have to report on, because it is something that the city was supposed to have done. It was, I believe, temporary help that should have had the sexual harassment training as required by New York State, and a few people didn't.
Okay.
Yeah. It wasn't like anything wrong with the books and records and the numbers. That's why I call it a compliance finding.
What's your opinions of our bond rating at this time?
I would say your bond rating should be fairly well. I mean, didn't you just go for it?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Any other questions?
Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one, we have the Middletown Community Campus, Brownfield Opportunity Area, grant presentation.
Hi, good evening. My name's Kate Striker. I'm with an organization called Hudson Valley Pattern for Progress. We are the consultant working with the city on this plan. You may have heard of Hudson Valley Pattern for Progress. If you haven't, we're a regional planning and policy and educational organization. And the city received a grant, and we are the consultant managing that grant. In the presentation today, I'm going to give a very brief project overview. I'm going to read to you the vision statement, which was developed with the help of the steering committee and the community at large. And I'm going to present some early findings, go through a list of the strategic sites, and if we have time at the end, I'll answer questions. We've been working on this project with the city, as listed here. The grant is being managed by the Department of State. They are funding this project, and that's our team here at Pattern for Progress. And you can see my name, Kate Striker, the second name there. Our steering committee has been meeting for about a year. You can see from the list of names here, they are representing diverse interests and communities in this planning process. Their role is to make sure that they're sort of representing those interests, sort of keep the planning team in check. They also help with our community engagement. They review Milestones. They helped us develop the community engagement plan, and they are sort of just a check along the way to make sure we're doing a good job. There's a project website, which is linked from the city website, and their community members are able to sign up an email list and get notifications about the project. So I'm sure you're all familiar, but the Middletown Community Campus is the former Middletown Psychiatric Center. It's the blue area highlighted on this map. Now it's the site of the Fayetteville College and other public nonprofit and private institutions and businesses. So this is a Brownfield Opportunity Area Planning Project. So just a minute on what brownfields are. Brownfields are land that are known or suspected to be contaminated due to past use. Typical brownfields are contaminated because they were the site of industry, gas stations, dry cleaners, or, in this case, a power plant is one of the known brownfields on the campus. They pose negative impacts for communities, first of which is that sort of have environmental hazards because they're contaminated, and related to that is the potential for community health risks. But additionally, they oftentimes remain vacant for decades because it is costly to clean them up and to redevelop them. And this can contribute to feelings of unsafety, discourage investment in the area, and just mean that that land is really just sitting vacant and underutilized. And so in response to that, New York State has what's known as a Brownfield Opportunity Area Planning Program, and that's the grant that the city received. The purpose of that program is to really work with the community on developing a vision for the area, in an area where there's a concentration of known or suspected brownfields, to create development concepts for strategic vacant and underutilized sites in that area, identify site and redevelopment opportunities that are aligned with the community vision. And I'm going to read the community vision in just a moment here. And then along with sort of focusing in on strategic sites, it's also an opportunity to create policy and action recommendations for the area. So we are creating a plan for the Middletown Community Campus as part of this planning process. We submit our completed report to the state, and then upon review, they will designate the area as what's known as a Brownfield Opportunity Area, which opens up that area to receive state subsidies, the main one of which is tax credits potentially to cover the costs of any remediation of contaminated sites. So this is approximately a two-year planning process. We are sort of wrapping up Phase 1. We had our kickoff meeting in January last year. In that time, we have been busy doing data collection, sort of analysis of the site at large, and we've also been doing different community engagement activities. Those activities are going to continue, but with that input, we have developed the vision for the site. We've created existing conditions analysis, and we've identified the strategic sites that we are going to propose development concepts for. And so we're moving into Phase 2, where we will be taking input from the community, the steering committee, conducting interviews to really think about what should be done with those sites, and then at the same time, developing recommendations to meet some of the goals that have been identified by the community. By May next year, we will have a draft plan. We will submit that again to the public for input, and then revise the plan based on that feedback, and then submit it to the state for designation. So as I mentioned, various forms of input. We have the steering committee. There's photos here of the committee touring the site. We've had one public meeting to date. We have another one scheduled at the end of this month. And then we did, we've done four focus meetings, and those are based on topics that were identified by the steering committee as sort of issues of need for the campus. I'm going to go through some of those in a minute here. We did a survey where we had over 230 respondents. On that survey, we asked the public to respond to that vision and some other questions about the community, and we've been doing tabling events where we're just showing up in the community. This weekend, I'm going to be at the Discover America event, just out and telling people about the project and getting input from them. So as I mentioned, the sort of first step in this process is developing a community vision for the campus. I'm just going to take a moment and read it to you. "The Middletown Community Campus is a vibrant and inclusive space that serves as a central hub for education, innovation, culture, the arts, commerce, and outdoor recreation. It's a place where people live, work, and play, drawn to its unique outdoor features, natural beauty, educational offerings, cultural events, dining options, and serene atmosphere. The campus provides the Middletown Community Campus with access to educational and vocational training, supporting local aspirations and career growth. Through its design, services, and events, the campus fosters connectivity between the site and the broader community. With excellent multimodal accessibility, welcoming pedestrians, cyclists, public transit users, and drivers, the campus is well-connected to trails and roads. The site's historical significance is celebrated through thoughtful architecture, informative signage, and special programming. Above all, the campus is a beloved cornerstone of the city of Middletown." So as I mentioned, we did workshop that vision with community input on the survey. We also had questions on the survey about people's perceptions of the campus. The results were varied. These are just a couple quotes to sort of demonstrate the varied response. I'd say overall, people had a positive reaction to the campus, but, you know, not everybody's even familiar with the campus. There's many people who took the survey who'd never been there. And we also asked people what they value about the campus, and the purpose of that question is because we don't want to suggest any changes that would take away from what's working well on the campus, and so sort of keeping those things intact. We also asked people what they'd like to see on the campus, and you can see the list of options. I'm not going to read through it for sake of time. Again, we had four focus meetings to date. We have a couple more planned. The topics are here. We had one on potential cultural and arts programming at the campus, community learning, education, and recreation, honoring history. The campus is, has a significant and sort of interesting medical history, but it's also, for the city at large, an important place. And so we talked a lot about how to honor that history on the campus. And then we had a focus meeting on bicycle and pedestrian access to the site. There's many people who already use the campus as a destination for biking and running. And there's, the planned heritage trail will be only two blocks, so thinking about connectivity to that trail to really invite people to the campus and for the people who use the campus daily to create better connectivity with the rest of the city. So this is the list of strategic sites. There are, I think, nine or 10 of them. As you can see, most of them are owned by the city. The far-right column shows whether or not they have known environmental concern, and the second one should say yes, actually. There was some environmental assessment work done on the campus a few years ago, and so there were potential risks or potential issues for some of the sites. Some of the sites have had no environmental work done, but based on the past use, there's predicted that there probably would be some environmental issues if testing were to be done. So for example, 24 Egerton has a former incinerator. As far as I was able to determine, there hasn't been any environmental assessment, but if there were, that would open that site up to tax credits for the remediation. And this is a map showing where the sites are on the campus. Again, most of the sites that were included in our strategic sites are city-owned. There's a fair amount of development potential on those sites. One of the sites is forever green, which means it'll remain undeveloped. However, there are improvements that could be made that would catalyze certain activity on the campus, so we're including it in our list. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. Thank you very much. My email is there. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? So no high-density housing on that site, right?
So in the survey, I can't remember the exact percent of people who mentioned housing. It was relatively low. There are students living on the campus now. There are a few housing units. And the Fayetteville College is planning more additional student housing in the Tuckerman Hall. I don't think we've gotten to the point in the planning process to determine exact uses, but I think one of the challenges and goals of this project is to make sure that the uses complement one another. And so there's a lot of, there's a fair amount of momentum towards it being an educational hub, and so any sort of development on the campus ideally would support that use.
All right. Any questions? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have another?
Yes. Our first speaker this evening is Marilyn Torley.
Hello and good evening. I just wanted to come this evening and to thank everyone's participation at the campus. We actually had our very first arts and cultural festival. We had over 2,000 people come to campus. It was a beautiful weekend. I was at the information booth, and it was amazing to hear the stories that our neighbors came to share with us. So I wanted to thank everybody who came. And a couple people said they came because they heard me come to the meeting about two weeks ago, so that was fun. So I'm going to take advantage of that and just share with you. We have another event happening on campus. It's AI Business Symposium, where small businesses and business leaders can come. There's going to be a panel discussion with local leaders on to discover how AI is transforming business, hear from leading experts and innovators, do some networking, and gain a better understanding of what AI is and how can it positively affect our businesses in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kevin Gomez.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, Kevin Gomez, resident of the Second Ward, I just wanted to come up and speak with respect to one of our, I guess, a gentleman who came up and spoke last time. First, I don't know what he was looking at, but he talked about Middletown from maybe some, over a decade ago. Because the Middletown from 10 years ago, or 12 years ago, or 14 years ago is very different thanks to common sense leadership and teamwork, from the council to administrators, through our stakeholders in the community, business entrepreneurs, our faith-based community, everybody that's come together. I remember walking down the street, down North Street over years ago, seeing relics of a bygone era. Now we see a city of not only what it can be, but what it will be. So I commend the strong response from our council president, everybody here, to saying, you know what, I think we just need to open our eyes a little bigger and see what we're doing here. Because in every business that we have in our community, whether it's Taco Factory, New Middletown, or Old Erie, each one of them, there is a story. The story that might have begun in the hearts of future parents, of past parents of yesterday, families debated over the dinner table, and through much sacrifice, they brought, they turned these businesses into establishments that have flourished and attracted people from all over. So I think we are a city that's rising, a city of the future, a model city of what can be done with common sense leadership. But one thing that also troubled me of the gentleman or the fellow who spoke last time was his remarks blaming, quote, "the Jews" for whatever he saw wrong. You know what? We have East Main Street. We have Highland Avenue. Keep driving down. Out the door. You don't belong in our city, not in our backyard. We are a community where we welcome everybody. And one thing I could say is that our Jewish community in Middletown, for generations, has been a benchmark or an establishment of blessing to all our people, known for their benevolence, good heart, and making a difference. And they are, and we are very honored to have them. And here, we do not tolerate any kind of racial bigotry, any kind of that kind of treatment and words. That has no place here. So out the door. Keep driving, keep driving until you fall off the cliff. We don't need you here. Thank you very much.
Following in the footsteps.
Good man. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Orange County Legislature Janet Sutherland.
Thank you so much. I'm Orange County Legislature Janet Sutherland, and I am really, really sorry about those Yankees. I think we were all kind of cheering for them, and that didn't work out. So anyway, thank you for giving me the opportunity to step up tonight and speak with you briefly. I'm here to give kudos to the mayor and to all of you on your project of the refurbishing of the O&amp;W train station. While I'm very proud to have had an extremely small part of the support group on the project, it is all of you that truly deserve the accolades. There are two things about this project that I absolutely love. I love the fact that Fesco Engineering is going to be keeping the beauty and the character of the building. It's, I believe it's what, like 130 years old or something? And so I love the fact that they're going to be keeping that on the outside while modernizing it on the inside. And the second part of the project that I absolutely love is the fact that it's going to be home to Recap. I think that's just incredible. And when I think about the, and my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is one of the projects that's going to be inside is going to be a daycare. And when we hear of the crisis that we have across the state with childcare, the fact that they're going to have a daycare there for, I believe it's roughly about 220 children or so, is really incredible. Along with, my understanding is about 10 classrooms for education purposes, a multipurpose room, a 7,200-square-foot playground, like that's, that's what these kids need, and I really think it's incredible. I'm hoping in the future to kind of work with Recap on their capital campaign, see what we can do about possibly getting additional funds for them. But again, thank you all for what you do to make this project come into fruition and really just keeping up with the revitalization of the city.
Thank you. Is it? All right. Remarks of the mayor.
Good evening, everyone. And County Legislature Sutherland, I want to thank you for your involvement in the O&amp;W project. You are going to be an important player as we move forward with the Recap Capital Campaign. As you know, Recap has a $10 million commitment for the interior renovations of this project. And I know that you've been supportive in our discussions regarding the possibility of either county funding, indirect county funding with pass-throughs from the state and federal government. So I appreciate your attention on the matter and also arranging for some discussions with the appropriate people as we move forward. So it's an important part of the project, and we are hoping to award, although the council did act, I believe the insurance is going to line up tomorrow, from what I'm told, by noon, all the paperwork should be in hand. Alex Smith, I don't know if the whole council's familiar, but there was a stop-work order that was placed on the project because of the plumbing bid. That's been worked out. We had, the attorneys were in court today. The judge has said to both, all the parties, now that you've resolved it, go ahead, make your awards. So all we're waiting on is the insurance tomorrow, and hopefully the project will get started very shortly. So that's all the good news, and we have more coming. So, first slide, Maria, please. You know, since we last met, we partnered with Senator Scoofus to host the Middletown Barbecue, which under, since Senator Scoofus has taken office, has become a regular event here in the city of Middletown. It's a free event, a community resource fair, held right here at Erie Way Park. It was well-attended, positive community event. Many residents, families, local organizations, and city departments attended, and chaired the booths by many of the, by many of the vendors, were well-received by the community. The city's partnership with Senator Scoofus underscores our shared commitment to community engagement and accessibility. You know, the programs are out there, but a lot of people don't know that programs are out there and for their assistance. And it's events like these where dozens and dozens of local agencies, not-for-profits, government agencies connecting residents directly to people who can help them. So the attendance, I know, exceeded the senator's expectations and ours. The city was also a co-sponsor of the event. Families' feedback was very positive, so I wanted to once again thank the senator for his, because financial assistance, too. This is an event sponsored with a grant through the senator to pay for all the activities that were there. Next slide is the Orange County Economic Summit at the Paramount Theater. We are once again happy to host the event at the theater. It was, again, well-attended. I think over 300 participants of businesses, business leaders, elected officials, developers, and economic professionals from all across the county. The Paramount is a perfect venue for that. I was honored to welcome the crowd to downtown Middletown, and they gave me about 10 to 15 minutes. I think Paul Johnson was there, Alderman Johnson. He told me it was 14 minutes, if I recall.
That's correct.
That's correct. Welcome the crowd to downtown Middletown, as I said, and spoke about what's happening in our community. We were able to highlight the ongoing downtown revitalization. We spoke about the strong financial position which you yourselves and the public heard tonight from RBT and Shannon, from our auditors, and also the city's appeal to new residents and businesses. I emphasize Middletown's role as a model city for small-city growth, where we are balancing historic preservation, which you heard the county legislator speak about tonight with the O&amp;W station, along with economic progress. the, with the O&amp;W station, along with economic progress. We have another project, the 46th North Street, a historic renovation, the old Montgomery Ward Building, also being restored under historic tax credits. Project is moving along in a very positive way. 24 units of housing, three commercial, or four, maybe four commercial spots on the first floor, with access out onto the park, and which we gave the easements to, not me, all of us, the council, and which made that project move forward. So those are the types of things that we are doing here in Middletown, and that's what I try to convey to this group of business leaders, is that we're here to work with you, and make, little things can make a project work. And that very small change of allowing that developer to take that 7, 8,000, 9,000 square feet of first-floor space, and rather only have one tenant, which is not marketable, but then to break that up into maybe three, four stores, storefronts, accessing onto a public park, as we did with 42 North Street across from Jerry's Park, made the project to go. And it's being restored, it's a beautiful building, and it's being restored under historic standards. So the, we were able to highlight the partnerships, our downtown success, our citywide success with sidewalks on Dulson Avenue, now getting into neighborhoods with our grant funds. You saw the lower end of Highland, some other neighborhoods that you'll see, Rockwell Avenue, with a new sidewalk on, due to Andrew and Jerry Kleiner's advocacy. But we have also put in for a $20 million grant for new sidewalks citywide, and we hope to hear early in 2026 on that project, and which we will then be able to take the sidewalk program and get into more and more neighborhoods. You saw that we did Grand Avenue across from the Twin Towers School. So we're looking at, where we score high on these grants is in the area of schools and parks, and of course, high pedestrian areas such as downtown, in, in this case, Dulson Avenue, which we were able to finally connect the Dulson Avenue superstores on ShopRite and other strip malls down there with the downtown itself. So it was a lot of positive feedback from the presentation, but more positive feedback for the community, because a lot of the people that were there haven't been in downtown Middletown, and some of them 10 years or more. And they just said, as Mr. Gomez said, you know, basically, what a difference. So I thank them, the Orange County Partnership, for their participation with us. They've been a big player with us under the former director, Maureen Hallahan, and now, of course, Connor Eckert. So it reinforced our position, I believe, as a hub for Orange County's economy. I think you heard some numbers from the auditor tonight about the activity from the city in regards to capital projects. $52 million investment currently ongoing within the city of Middletown, and that's a significant number. So, the hosting of that summit, as I said, was, gave us an opportunity to showcase our community, and we were able, I thought, put on a very positive, a very positive show for them. So the next slide is recognizing one of our down, not downtown businesses, one of our city businesses. Dr. Tanise Wall, with her seven years of service to the greater Middletown community, invited us to a, a, basically a seven-year recognition of her business, thanking the community, doing an open house, and I was happy to attend on that Saturday. And I'm happy to attend on behalf of the council, and of myself, and of the residents, and I wanted to thank her for her professionalism, her compassion, and her deep commitment to this community. You know, she had worked with the school district for many, many years, and now has a very successful business up on Highland Avenue. So thank you, Dr. Wall. And she is our Business of the Meeting recognition. We try to acknowledge and recognize businesses at every meeting because of how important they are to our community. This, this meeting is Dr. Wall. Marion, Marilyn was here and spoke about the arts and cultural festival, and it really was a beautiful event, a beautiful setting at the community campus. These are some of the things that we are talking about in the BOA, how to bring people on campus, and we're not waiting for the BOA to be completed, the planning current to be completed. We are doing things, as you know, with Kleiner Center, with Tuckerman, and other, and other buildings. But the BOA not only would be a planning device, but will be an economic stimulus for taking care of some of these properties on the campus. But this day was not a day for that. This was a day that we basically partnered with Fatihian College and others on the campus for this well-attended event. It celebrated the artistic and cultural traditions that make Middletown such a vibrant community. It wasn't just an Asian-based event. I know the Maiorachi Band was there and others, but it was a collaboration between different organizations, different groups, arts, education, and cultural exchange. The festival brought together local artists, there was a lot of entertainment, students, performers, families, and as Marilyn said, there were 2,000 attendees over the, over the two days, and I'm sure that they will be doing it again next year, and it will be an event that will grow as we move forward. Next slide is the Kids Day Celebration that was postponed due to rain from June, I believe. This was sponsored by the Middletown Police Department and Chief Iwanchu. Again, another, and I believe some of these events were all happening on the same day. So we were scattered all over the city with well-attended events, and all of them were nicely supported by the community. So it shows our strength, our partnership of, between city police department and our business community and our residents. And I know the Chief Iwanchu has really stepped up in this area of outreach into the community. So I wanted to congratulate the chief and the police department for an event well-done, and I know that the Parks Department and the Economic Development Department worked with them very closely on that. And I'd also like to thank our county legislator Janet Sutherland, who was one of the sponsors of the event. As you know, these events don't happen just with city funds, that, there are several businesses, and you see the businesses located on the, on the brochure, what's up on the, on the screen, but one of them is the, is our county legislator who felt that it was a worthwhile event, and I'm sure she was very happy with the event. So I want to say publicly thank her for her part in that, and thank all the local businesses who participated. Next is our Fire Department retirements. We had two, I think we spoke about Mike Watery at a previous meeting, but maybe, or, but we also had the very next day Lieutenant Taggart, and I wanted to thank them both for their years of service, wish them good health and happiness in their well-earned retirement. Both are, have spent at least 20 years here in the city. So I'm sure on behalf of all of you, I offered my congratulations, attended both of their walkouts. Inspector Watery was here at City Hall, Lieutenant Taggart was at the firehouse, and I wanted to, again, publicly acknowledge their years of service and thank them. So in the area of public safety, though, there was also recognitions on the county level for some of our city employees and emergency service personnel. The Meritorious Service Awards that were handed out at this most recent county dinner included a recognition of some city staff that were heroic efforts on August 15th at Eight-Nap Avenue, which we've already recognized here locally. But we're also wanted to recognize or acknowledge that they did receive these awards on the county level for First Assistant Fire Chief Randy McLean, and police officers Festa, Reyes, Skiondra, and Hurley of the Middletown Police Department. As you know, they did save a life at Eight-Nap Avenue. Randy McLean was the first on the scene and took immediate action, and then was assisted with the efforts of the police department. So once again, I'm, congratulate them on this level of recognition by the Orange County government and by the Meritorious Service Awards, and receiving these awards, well, well-deserved. And we are very fortunate in our community to have first responders who consistently go above and beyond in service to our community. This is just one small example of that, so I wanted to thank all of those involved. Our next is the very own John Perino. I've, if you've lived in Middletown for, no matter what number of years, you know John Perino. I go back to when I was a kid and he was walking his dogs around the neighborhood. Mr. Massey knows, because he walked around the First Ward all the time. I think they were bullmastiff dogs, they're monster dogs. But John, also his, his mother and my grandmother were best of friends when, going way, way back. But that's on a personal note. But on a professional note, John was a member, has been a member of the Middletown School District for Board of Education for 24 years. He's also a teacher at Middletown. He was also involved with the library, development of the library services in Middletown. And this year, he has the honor of being named, this year's recipient of the New York State School Boards Association's Everett R. Dyer Award for Distinguished School Board Service, and this is the organization's highest honor. I know John's going to be recognized at a future meeting of the Board of Education, or, not only the Board of Education, but at this statewide organization, and you can't find a school board member or a board member of any type more committed than John Perino. So congratulations to John, congratulations to the Middletown School Board for having a member who's receiving this honor. So I wanted to thank John for his years of service and well-deserved. Our next slide is the Community Paramount Theater and the Stylistics. You know, we, I attended the event downtown, and it was well-attended. It was a Stylistics and a Manhattan's, and, and it was really buzzing around town the next day about what a great show it was. And a lot of people said to me, you know, if I only knew about it, I would have gone. I would have gone. So I'm trying to encourage people to sign up for the city events. We'll send you text messages, we'll send you emails, we'll, you know, we do advertise, we do social media. Sign up for the events, because it was great to see so many residents there. The downstairs was just about full at the Paramount, people walked out singing and happy, and, but the, that one thing, I always, always bugs me a little bit, if I only knew. So we're trying to do, get messages out, of course, do a better job at getting the message out, but I think on these things, we are getting the message out. We did mailings, we do social media, we do advertise a lot of it. So, so we're asking people to sign up for, is it Civic Plus it's called, Rick? To go to our website, you can get not only what's happening at the Paramount, but you can find out about the street closures, you can find out about what's happening in the community, find out what's happening at meetings. So this is just an example I wanted to use to encourage people to get more involved or communicate back with us, or sign up for those communication devices. So hopefully, more people will do it. We're going to find out what the number is today of people who signed up for Civic Plus, and then we're going to wait a month, and we'll see if we had any positive effect on that. So hopefully, we will. Next is the Health Fair that was held at Mulberry House on Friday, October 3rd. Again, many organizations that were there. This is all part of the outreach. I wanted to congratulate Donna Provos, who works at the center for her outstanding work in organizing and coordinating this event. I did attend, and as you can see, we had a good time speaking with all the vendors and some of the attendees. But these are the exact types of events that we should be doing, and we should be doing part of that, again, that outreach of city government. The very next day, there was a, city hosted a, and supported, you know, historically, we've supported many events celebrating our growing Latino community. You know, based on certain numbers, you know, the Latino population makes up more than half of our population here in the city of Middletown. So this past Saturday, the Senior Center participated in their first Hispanic celebration. You know, we have Cinco de Mayo, we have a whole bunch of events that we participate in, but this was the first one that the Senior Center has done, and it was open to all residents, not just seniors. So I wanted to welcome the Senior Center of Board to that activity, and I also wanted to thank the council president for representing me at this event. I was out of town with my grandson, but these are important events that we need to show our face at, and it was important for council president to be there. Helen Tatis was also there. She's our HR director and did a great job, from what I understand, in representing the city, and spoke on my behalf, written my letter to the, to the community that, who are, to the attendees. But more importantly, it's that, again, that outreach, and thanks to the organizers and the volunteers who helped make the day a very meaningful and successful day. Next is the Pumpkin Palooza, and I'm, as you can see, we're talking about a lot of events, because we're doing a lot of events, and we want people to participate in these events. So we also had the, a great community event, and I believe it might be the second year that we've done this, where the Parks and Recreation Department, working with the bid district, the downtown district, working with the Kiwanis Club, had a carving pumpkins, I guess there were hundreds of pumpkins out on the field here, and the Kiwanis Club sponsored a movie at 6:45 that night, an outdoor movie. And as I said, it's events like this that highlight Middletown, and offers fun and engaging activities for children, families, and we're mentioning more and more of these events because we want more and more people to start attending them, if possible. So there is plenty of happening. You know, residents are encouraged, once again, to sign up for Civic Plus. They're encouraged, if you have children, if you, if you're one of those people that says there's nothing for kids to do here in Middletown, go to the Parks and Rec Center and find out, there's a lot of things to do in Middletown, and a lot of kids are participating. You can see from the photos that it was well-attended, and we were very happy with the outcome. And also, thank you to the Kiwanis Club for their sponsorship of this, because it's connecting community, it's creativity, it's family fun, and so there's always something happening here for us. So our next slide is the Discover America, which is coming up on October 12th. We're asking everybody to join us at Erie Way Park for this event. It's part of our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. It's the first of, as I said, many annual events aimed at celebrating culture, community, and connection in different communities. So if you're there, if you come, you'll enjoy a lot of live music, traditional music, traditional Latin American performances, it'll be fun for all ages, a lot of children's activities and cultural demonstrations, local Middletown restaurants will be serving food, and just as equally as important, as I said, would be the live entertainment that will be there. So the event runs from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. It's a full afternoon of family entertainment and family-friendly activities, open to anyone, not only in the city, but in the area, and so come out and celebrate and enjoy. This is the type of event that reflects Middletown's commitment to diversity, culture, and community engagement. As kids, Mr. Massey and I can tell you that the First Ward, we had these smaller events, we're celebrating the Italian community, but the, you know, the demographics in the community have changed. The community now is predominantly Latino, and there's a big, big focus and a big desire from the Latino community to celebrate their heritage. So you don't have to be Latino to come to this event. Please come and enjoy and celebrate others', others' culture and activities. So all of these events, I wanted to then express my thanks to all of city staff. I know some of them are going out of their way. A lot of it is coordinated through the Economic and Cultural Affairs Department, Maria Bruni, there's city staff, but to thank all city staff, the volunteers, community partners, local businesses, because the local businesses, again, they are an important part of this. The sponsor, our county legislator, a sponsor, other private individuals have been sponsoring things, our service clubs are sponsoring. So all of this brings everyone together to build a stronger Middletown, more inclusive and more vibrant city. So I encourage everyone to come out this weekend and enjoy what we have to offer. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
All the Massey.
Yes, sir.
Did you forget to congratulate me on my retirement from civil service?
As soon as you're out of here permanently, I will congratulate you.
You mean?
Asked and answered.
It's your choice. You can interpret permanent in whatever way you want.
Have any other questions? So, good.
All right, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Our remarks of the Department has Economic Development.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to start by thanking for the CDA tonight. We had our budget submission presentation. Leonora, thank you for all your help, along with Patty, and we're on our way to submitting our budgets to the state and moving forward with that program. Also, thank Kate Striker for Pattern for Progress. As she stated, we've been working a year on this BOA grant, and moving along, and some great stuff to come out of it. And out of my office, I'd like to thank Caitlin, who's part of this and working hard as well with the, with Kate, too many Kate, Caitlin's, Caitlin. So working towards getting this packaged up, sent to the state, and approved, so we could... so we could start seeking more grant funds and continue the revitalization that's happening up there. And also tonight on the agenda, I have, looking for your support, the resolution for the acceptance and proposal in the sale of Seven King Street. As you know, we did a request for concepts and qualifications. And the review committee and my department, we reviewed and we had two submissions. So Seven, it's Denali Realty and OCF. They are the chosen, are being awarded this. And you all emailed the proposals and this, I believe, is going to be a good fit for that building and another building that's going to be reactivated, revitalized and can't wait to see the outcome of that. And I think on the Paramount front, we have another event this weekend coming up, celebrating Meatloaf. It's Meatloaf Tribute, bad out of Halloween. So and Caleb Johnson, he was American Idol singer, he's the lead singer in this group, so he's going to be there. So it's October 11th, 8:00 PM, MiddletownParamount.com, get your tickets now. That's all I have.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria. Fire chief.
Good evening. Last month, or actually, last month, we did 95 calls for services. Tonight, we have three members getting voted into companies as volunteer firemen. We got two in background checks. So our numbers are growing, which is a great thing. Hopefully, we can retain them. We're trying to come up with different ways for retention. Andrew's been working on that for us with one of our members to keep everybody. We had a fire last week at Orange County Community College. It was a small fire, but it caused a lot of smoke and some panic in the building at the time. OFPC State Fire came because they do the oversight at that college. Orange County Bureau of Fire Investigators were there. They came up with determination that it was a, an electrical fire to a battery in an IT room that is serviced by what they call a.
UPS?
What?
The UPS?
No, no, no. They, they have two, like, they're not Halon, but they have two systems that actually charged, that really did the job. We were there, we stretched the line just as precautionary because there was a ton of smoke. But the, the system, Surefire, that's what it's called. Surefire activated and put the fire out and within two hours, they were able to reoccupy most of the building. There was a little bit of damage done to that one area. Today, we had a fire at McDonald's. So if anybody likes fast food, you're not going there tonight. It shut down, they had a fire, an active fire inside the hood system. But it was behind the, the grease vents. So the system never tripped, but the fire did make its way and we had active fire on the roof. So there was some damage, the Orange County Health Department was notified. They were told the fire, the new fire inspector, Andy Wackowski, was there and he told everybody the steps that they need to be able to reopen. So hopefully they'll be open within the next couple of days. We'll be out Friday for the Halloween trick or treat. The trucks will be in their locations as the safe haven, but we also give out fire prevention material. We also have candy for the kids. Highland Ave, we're debating if we want to put another truck on Highland Avenue because of the activity that's up there. It's packed up there. So we're discussing that in the office. Not sure where we can start the conversation. I know it was brought up a couple of years ago and it never really went anywhere, about nuisance alarms for the fire department. I know it's in the city charter for nuisance alarms for the police department, but there's nothing in the charter for the fire department. That's a conversation that needs to like happen now. We are chasing the same fire alarm to the same building time and time again. And, and we're taking apparatus away from, you know, a possible real emergency while we're chasing this same alarm to get the owners to step up and take care of the buildings that they own. So.
We, we have it. It was, it fell out of committee because it was who was going to write the violation. And currently it had like your car five could do the violation. We didn't feel comfortable with that. So I think we can bring it back up, put it in public safety and then talk about, you know, if it's the fire inspector along with the, with the fire chief that makes that recommendation. If it's over two, three, four, or five calls for a certain time and they're not repairing the system, then, you know, but I think we didn't want to have somebody who's filling in saying, I'm finding you a violation.
That's understood, but again, we have to have a serious conversation.
We, we, we talk all the time. We have multiple calls.
Well, I know you guys see the alarms come in on your phones and it's.
The same address.
Yes.
Well, hopefully the new fire inspector can also straighten them out.
It is a couple of days by himself and he has had probably about 100 emails from the chief's office on areas that he needs to, to follow ups on, follow ups on, so. And that's all I have.
Any question for the fire chief? Do we do open house fire prevention anymore?
We, we are planning one for next year. And now that you said that, we are planning an open house for next year. We kind of stopped doing it because we do so many events, the community events now. And what we're handing out at the community events is the same things that we're handing out. You know, we're doing the fire prevention material at these community events. It was the same things that we were doing at the central firehouse. But we're going to try to come up with a, a new program and we do plan on doing an open house. Right now, last week and this week, we're very busy with Fire Prevention Week, getting to all the schools, the daycares. We've had a couple of class trips of daycare students come to the firehouse. And they get to sit in the truck, they blow the horns, these kids light up, they love it. One kid wanted to be a member now. He didn't understand why he couldn't be a member at five. So he said, well, you know, maybe there's a way we can get you as a member, but you just won't be able to be active. But, you know, it was great to see and the guys, the program has changed for the career side, going out to the schools and it's been well accepted. We get a lot of letters from parents that, that were able to be there with their child that think that it was great what we're teaching. You know, we're not just showing them what we do, we're showing them how to kind of prevent and what to do in case of. Next year will be our tri-annual Fireman's Parade that we're doing every three years now. But it will be going on next year. We haven't picked an official date, we're going to do September or October. But Randy, Assistant Chief McLean, is in committee right now. I know he's been in contact with Maria Bruni. I'm trying to make it a, like maybe a couple of events during the day and then end it with a fire parade. Maybe we can get a little more attendance out there because the attendance, sometimes our fire parades are a little slow and in certain areas. Now I'm done.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, chief. City treasurer.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you for my team and the rest of the departments for assisting with this audit. I just want to emphasize that the RBT audit is a very thorough extensive audit and it takes a lot of work and a lot of effort and it is a group effort, so thank you so much for that. And also for, to the department heads and each department for working with me to monitor your budgets conservatively, responsibly for the most part. It really takes a lot of, lot of monitoring and day-to-day grind just to make sure that we are financially strong. So thank you again.
Okay, any question? All right, thank you, great job. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. Just want to say what an incredible weekend there was in the city of Middletown and how lucky residents are, even outsiders, to be able to come into the city and have from 9:00 AM until dark, until our movie showed of events and things to do, all for free. We had our Pumpkin Palooza, which was a success. We had pumpkin carving, face painting, crafts, yard games, Sunday ice cream bar, apple cider, donuts, and a movie. Special thank you to the Middletown Kiwanis Club, MHS Key Club, the Middletown Police Department, and Strawberry Fields Ice Cream for providing the ice cream. We also had our community bike ride on a heritage trail, which was awesome, low numbers, but it's a great start. Thank you to BikeWay, who did rentals, met us right near the switch-in in the parking lot there and had free rentals for two residents and they were very excited because it was an electric bike, so they're happy about that. And to the police department for joining us on the ride. And like I said, from 9:00 AM to, to when our movie finished last night, you could, you could have went to the Hispanic Heritage Celebration at the Senior Center all day. They had that and just our many events. So just lucky to be a resident in the city of Middletown and have all these great experiences and great activities that are free for families. One last push for, we have a Disney on Ice, Sunday, May 2nd. It's $90 a person. These are the two bus trips that we are doing this year. The first one is to Radio City. Don't get excited, that one is full and closed out already. Disney on Ice is still available, again, Sunday, November 2nd, $90 per person. It includes your ticket, round trip transportation to the Prudential Center. And if anyone's ever gone to the Prudential Center, it's having transportation is nice. You don't have to pay for parking, going to get dropped off right there, see the show, get back on a bus and go home, so it's worth it. Where it's going to be, the new show that they have is called Jumped In. They're going to have characters from Moana 2, Inside Out 2, and Encanto with the classic characters from Frozen, Toy Story, and it's going to be, of course, led by Mickey and his friends. So if you're interested in that show, please go on our Facebook page or our registration site and get your ticket. Any questions?
All right, any questions? All right, thank you. Senior director.
Good evening. I know the mayor got started with the stuff that we were doing, but we actually started our weekend with the Health Fair. We had over 30 vendors and we had over 300 people come, which was nice because it was during the day on a Friday. So to have that many people come through was great. And then we continued the next day with the Hispanic Heritage. We went from one thing to the other and the whole center was changed from a health and wellness place to a Latin festival. So we had delicious food, we had entertainment. And it was beautiful because it was just a small showcase of many people in our community, from singing to Congo playing, to drums, to music, to guitar playing. So I was excited about that and I wanted special thanks to our special events committee, which is all senior volunteers. It was a total of 12 women that put the idea in my head and pushed me to do this program. And I was very, of course, it was special to me as a Latin woman, so I was very excited about that. And maybe next year, we could collaborate with the economic development and end up Parks and Recs and make it a bigger event, which I look forward to being able to do that. Also, I want to thank Police Chief Huanchu for, he coordinated two officers to be with us during the day. That was very nice. It was nice that they, and they enjoyed it as well. And it was, the police presence made the community a little bit more comfortable and safer. And then we have a Halloween party that's just for our members, for the seniors. They're going to be having a costume contest, so look out for the posts. We have three genres and that'll be fun. And then a reminder that the, due to early voting at the end of this month, beginning October 25th, and it will run through Sunday, November 2nd, and then the general election on Tuesday, November 4th. So all that week, we will not have our senior programming. So I just, to touch base that we will not have programming, but we will continue Wednesday, November 5th with our regular scheduled program. And that's it.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
City clerk.
Good evening. Mr. Kleiner sends his regrets that he wasn't able to join us tonight and he asked me to let the community know that the warming station has met and the warming station will be opening earlier this year. It'll open up on November 1st, so we will need volunteers earlier than in the past. The next volunteer training session will be on Wednesday, October 15th at 7:00 PM at the warming station on Mulberry Street. There are more scheduled, but Mr. Kleiner will go into further details of those at the next meeting in October. Thank you very much.
All right, any question for the city clerk? Public hearings and grievances.
Good evening. We have one public hearing this evening. This hearing is a mandatory public hearing as the city looks to renew its franchise agreement with Spectrum. For the approval of a cable television franchise agreement between Spectrum Northeast LLC and the city of Middletown, please take notice that the common council of the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 6th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the common council chambers regarding proposed grant of a cable television franchise agreement between and by the city of Middletown and Spectrum Northeast LLC, an indirect subsidiary of Charter Communications. The proposed agreement is available for public inspection during normal business hours in the office of the city clerk, 16 James Street, Middletown, New York, is also on the city website. Such public hearing, all interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard. Written oral statements will be taken at this time as well.
Okay, this time the public hearing is open. Any comments or questions, either from the public or the council? Do I have a motion to close? Massey, second by Alden Ray, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, remarks of Alderman, Alden Massey.
Yes, I would like to congratulate and thank Leonora and her staff for the outstanding job they did. Certainly makes it easier on us. She makes sure that when we're spending the taxpayers' money, we do it the right way, so thank you very much.
Alden Witt.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree on that Aldi, fantastic work, thank you so much. And I just, I feel like Jerry would say this if he was here, that tomorrow is the Thrall Library Board Election and Budget Vote. And it runs from 8:00, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at Thrall Library, Tuesday, October 7th. Thank you very much.
Alden Green.
All right, thank you. Yeah, kudos to the treasurer and your staff and just an amazing, amazing audit as usual. But you have very hardworking and dedicated staff and they're wonderful to work with and very persistent when they need to be, but in a nice way. Also, we will be having our second work constituents meeting on Monday, the 13th. It is Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day. You choose the name for it, we'll be here regardless at 7:00 PM right in the council chambers. So look forward to seeing you there. And just a little personal note, I did get a text message about 10 minutes ago from the city of Middletown telling me about the Meatloaf show. So they do go out and you will get notified if you do sign up. But, you know, just another thing about the downtown area, it's really interesting and really fun for me to have my kids growing up here because most kids, you offer them a day, you know, where do you want to go today? It's a Saturday, we're lazy, what do you want to do? I want to go to Walmart, I want to go Target, I want to go pick out a toy, I want to go to the mall or something like that. What does my son want to do? He goes, can we go to that bookstore, meaning Well-Worn Books? He's got to be their number one customer. But, you know, it's really fun to be able to go downtown, walk with him. He looks in every window, loves to see the things. He goes, oh, let's go to that, that croissant place. He's five and he wants a croissant. I don't know, he's weird. Either way, we had a great time and there's just so much you can do downtown with your family. And it's great to, to have young ones that you can just bring up within this community and just, you know, take them out. And everyone is so nice and every store owner is so friendly. It's just such a blessing that we have here in Middletown and, you know, we just got to keep it moving. Awesome, thank you so much.
Alden Ray.
Good evening. I don't even know how many different ways I can echo and amen so many things that have been said tonight. But you're 100% right, Andrew. I mean, what a great place to raise your children. We have the best schools, the best programming available to kids. And, you know, frankly, middies just do it better, right? I mean, any other town might do some events, but we just do them better. Our Night's Out Against Crime. Our Friday night concerts, you will watch people from every walk of life, from every generation, and they're all sitting in one small park and they are having a blast together. We don't have issues, we don't have division in our city. We're middies and we get together and we have a great time. And our Paramount does amazing shows. And, I mean, city alerts, I have to admit, the alert went out for the lacrosse program for rec and I'm like. And, I mean, city alerts, I have to admit, the alert went out for the lacrosse program for rec and I'm like, yes, I've been waiting for that. And I got my kid signed up right away and she's loving it. And we have so many things to celebrate. Every ribbon cutting, the walk through our downtown, the, 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 there are no more boarded windows everywhere. That's not where we live anymore. You know, the city is beautiful. Our community is amazing and vibrant. You know, one of my students told me that her family owns a new Haitian restaurant and I'm so excited about that. These are our people, our, our businesses, our neighbors and our friends and our family. And the way we kind of come together, I'm always impressed. We just rise above. So yay, Middletown. That's all I got to say today.
Alderman Johnson.
I'll talk about itself acts to follow. My goodness. I want to thank the audit committee. It's not a surprise, but never taken for granted, so thank you. A couple of educational icons, I want to thank whoever's in charge of the viewing box or P R. Box, whatever we call that box at Old Slayer Field. Uh, kind of the icing on the cake. And as far as Mr. Perino, as you know, I have pretty strong ties to the Board of Education. And John is, is iconic. Um, so for NISBA to recognize him with their highest award, uh, it's well deserved. I enjoyed our presentation of the summary of the steering committee. Uh, those may not realize that Kate and I run that committee by virtue of, it is located in the third ward best ward. And Jerry's on that committee because of his historical knowledge of the site, having grown up there literally. Um, and I think the facilitator, that Kate, as well as this Kate, is doing a great job. Uh, the Fai Chan Festival, I think it was a very good dovetail into the steering committee. Um, Dr. Tworley gave the summary, the mayor did as well. But the takeaway for me, besides having been there on Sunday with a hundred vendors, is two thousand people walked through the site, many of whom hadn't been there for a long time. Or maybe they were there when they were employees of what we call the psych center. And we're doing slow and steady to bring people into the site to say this is a really good, really good place to be. As far as the economic summit, you know, we live it, we breathe it. We're doing O N. W., we're doing the parking garage, we're doing the courthouse, we did the thing, we have the stores, we have the Paramount. But to sit there and listen to the mayor present our city to business people from throughout the county, list after list after list, how much money we brought in for this, how much grant we had for that. If you listen to it back to back in an impartial setting like that summit, it's amazing. We should all be very proud. Maybe for ourselves, but more so for the mayor and for the administration. Once again, it's not a surprise, but it's not taken for granted, all the things that you brought forward to the city. And we certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Yes, uh, good evening. I had the honor and the privilege to, uh, attend the Hispanic Heritage, uh, celebration. It was very informative. Uh, I gotta, you know, I gotta say, starting with the food, the culture, the music, the dancing. It was great to see the seniors having such a great time. Jalisa, I want to thank you and your staff for the hard work. I know the mayor mentioned it was the first celebration that takes place in the city of Middletown. Hopefully, there's more to come. Great job. Tip my hat to you and your, and your, and your staff. Leonora, great job with the presentation of the, uh, of the, uh, budget. Great work. Appreciate all you do for the city of Middletown. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin.
I just was watching the Kiwanis pumpkin thing. I thought about, you know, all of us, besides being public servants, are involved in the community other service ways, whether it's the fire department, church, service organizations, Kiwanis, Lions Club. The senior center is always looking for volunteers, school, youth sports, historical society, community organizations. There's a lot of ways, when I, I go, go through neighborhoods, people ask me, I'd like to get involved. There's tons of avenues to get involved in the city and they're looking for your support. A lot of our organizations are eighty, ninety years old. I think the fire department's over hundreds of years old, so we're look, you know, there's a lot of ways you can help the community if you're interested. Just reach out. Like to thank Jalisa and her department. The Hispanic Heritage, uh, celebration was awesome. Good food, good vibes, good music. I really enjoyed it. Uh, and finally thank Leonora and her department for the clean audit. I know it's difficult to make sure every T is crossed, every I is dotted, so thank you.
Okay, new business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing a budget transfer within the twenty-twenty-five water and sewer budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez. Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, authorizing a budget transfer within the twenty-twenty-five water budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Row.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, authorizing a budget transfer within the twenty-twenty-five street maintenance budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Ray. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, accepting a donation of a two thousand sixteen Dodge Caravan from Mid-City Transit.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by older, older woman Ray, accepting a one thousand dollar donation from First Federal Savings.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, awarding bids for surplus vehicles auction through Auctions International.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Witt. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, authorizing a budget transfer within the twenty-twenty-five economic development budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, authorizing a proposal from Valverde Plumbing and Heating for an H V A C upgrade and replacement for the boxing gym.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing a budget transfer from within the twenty-twenty-five Civil Service Department budget.
Is it Green?
Green.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Ray. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Abstain.
Massey abstains. President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, authorizing the moving of the November fourth, twenty-twenty-five council meeting to Monday, November third, in observance of Election Day.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, approving a temporary borrowing from the water fund balance for the raw water line project phase one.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. A resolution sponsored by older woman Ray, approving a transfer from the general fund balance for paving projects.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing a budget transfer to cover various costs for the remainder of the year.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, authorizing a budget transfer within the water budget to cover a shortage in office expenses.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois. Any discussion?
Tobin, oh, I'm sorry. Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois. Johnson. Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, authorizing the acceptance of a proposal and sale of Seven King Street.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Abstain.
President Rodriguez abstains. Motion carries.
Audit.
Mr. President, I move the accounts to be audited, claims to be adjusted, and received. The chair should be authorized to issue warrants for the payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Move for a German?
No move.